All right, Ms. Evans, we are continuing on.
We got a number here. Okay, so the next portion of today's all-day work session is the Suicide Prevention Risk Assessment and Post-Vention Policy. I hope that we can do a little catching up. I know we're all hungry, so if everybody could put down their addicted screens and focus on the presentation that's going to be given here initially by Teresa Johnson, and then we've got experts here to help us out as well.
Thank you. I just want to say good afternoon, and thank you for Dr. Panarelli and Dr. Baylor to be here today to answer questions. Our purpose today really is to take a look at the language that's written in the new Suicide Prevention Risk Assessment and Post-Vention Policy. I'm going to just highlight a few items from the one-pager, and then Dr. Panarelli is going to speak to a few of the slides that you've reviewed from the posted presentation. In late 2014, the Centers for Disease Control provided epidemiological assistance, which is called EPIAid, to our Fairfax County to provide guidance on enhanced suicide prevention strategies. One of their recommendations was that FCPS should establish a policy to systematize practices and implementation of efforts in FCPS for suicide prevention, risk assessment, and post-vention activities. The new policy sets expectations for training and resources, increased awareness of risk factors, and requires the establishment of guidelines for effective responses by school staff to students who express suicidal ideation and following suicide. Now, Dr. Panarelli is going to go through a few of the slides with you about the elements of the policy.
So I'm just going to cover the three slides that talk about the key elements of the policy, and then there is some additional information in your slide packet about practices that are already in place. As Teresa said, the guidance was to sort of systematize some practices that we had and make clear to the public what they were. So in terms of prevention activities, we have activities developed for staff members, for families, and for students, and the policy directs looking particularly at mental wellness activities, risk and protective factors, and building resiliency overall. As most of you know, we do mental health wellness screenings throughout the year, and our presentations for parents and students and teachers primarily are focused on stigma reduction and help-seeking, and just knowing signs of depression and suicidal thinking, as well as being aware of some community resources. We've done a tremendous amount of work with our community partners so that sort of no matter which door a parent might come through, they will get similar information about how to get to resources. And then part of our prevention effort is to have a response in place when something comes to our attention, either from a parent or another student, so that we can intervene early. One of the new things that we've done this year is added to the student health form that all parents fill out at the beginning of the year alphabetically within the other conditions that one might have, you know, anxieties with asthma, and depression is with diabetes. In other words, it's alphabetically within there as opposed to pulling it out as a separate mental health thing, because again, our overall message is to reduce stigma. When a student does come forward, often through another student, thanks to a lot of the work we've been doing with the Student Advisory Committee, and a lot of work we've been doing around helping students understand what the signs are, often it is another student who brings forward a concern, or a teacher, or a parent. But when a student has indicated to someone that they are considering taking their life, that they are hopeless and don't feel that there's any answer in sight, et cetera, we have established a very systematic protocol for establishing how much risk that student may be for actually having a plan, having the means to use that plan, and sort of the level of their intention. We have instituted this year, last year, the use of the Columbia Screener, which is a systematic screening that gives you a numerical sort of reading to go along with the sort of clinical judgment of the people involved. We overall have psychologists and the social workers are typically the ones completing those, but all counselors have also been trained in the use of the Columbia in the event that a psychologist or a social worker just isn't available in the building when it is necessary to do this assessment. And then there is a specific protocol for, the policy gives direction that there be a specific protocol for notifying parents, tracking that that notification was done, et cetera, so that we're clear, and legal has agreed that we need to be clear that the assessment was done, what our recommendations were, and the parent, actually, if we feel that this youth is suicidal, is actively suicidal, the parents sign something saying they've gotten that information from us. The Return to Learn Protocol is one that we developed last year, which gives school teams specific questions, parameters to ask when a student has been out for multiple reasons. It could be a concussion, it could be a pregnancy, it could be a broken leg, but also for the mental health concerns, if they've been out and they're now coming back in, how to build the best supports around that student so they can successfully transition back in. In terms of post-vention activities, most of you are fairly aware of our crisis teams that are centrally developed. There are five teams for each region. All of the team leaders have been trained in a protocol called PREPARE. That's from the National Association of School Psychologists. We do short-term grief counseling, but a lot of our work is identifying other students who may be at risk because of this event that has occurred, or just come to our attention because we've had an opportunity to talk to the kids. Sometimes there's other events that we were unaware of, but keeping track of who those students are, and then in the weeks following, the school-based team follows up with those students and their parents, and obviously with referral for appropriate services. So that's the core of the policy that you're being asked to consider. As I said, the rest of the slides just give you some more information about what we've been doing.
Okay, I think we have a couple of people on the list for questions. Megan is first, and then Elizabeth.
So as the former governance chair, this was brought to the Governance Committee, and we did spend quite a bit of time working with staff. We really appreciate the research and the great work you did, helping to bring Palo Alto Public Schools out near Stanford and their policy, doing sort of a crosswalk to see how we could ensure that the policy really did help speak at a very high level of the importance of this issue, and I think help our public as they start first with where is the school system via policy on this, and then allow the regulations to then provide the greater detail. One of the things we did on governance is, unlike some of our other policies, and I appreciated staff indulgence on this, is we did ask it to be a little more comprehensive in scope, this policy, and I want to thank staff support again for that desire, because this is a testament, and it is important issue in our community and nationally as well. And people are looking at Fairfax County. In fact, during the time we worked on this, there was a woman from Australia who reached out to me through connection, saying, "I understand this is something Fairfax County's really done great work on, and can I get information?" And staff was wonderful. So globally, people are going to look to us, and so I'm pleased with how this policy came together. I'm very proud of our school system and the great work that DeeDee and Mary Ann and so many others, including Jane Lipp, Kim Dockry, all wrapped their arms around something very important, because prevention means everything. And so getting this into policy, having a supportive regulation to it that I know will be a living, breathing regulation, but Dr. Brabran, I look forward to your continued leadership on something that is a national issue, and us being leaders on it is important. So mostly want to express my appreciation, let my colleagues know we really vetted this policy very well, and look forward to people's support on it when we vote as an action item in about a week and a half or so.
Ms. Schultz?
Yeah, I guess my question is, I think we struggle as a board sometimes understanding the scope of what's happening. This is more what's happening in the schools, but for us as a board, and, you know, I'm not asking for us to get more reports, but I certainly would like to have a better understanding, because one of the biggest aha moments for me was finding out how many attempted suicides there are. We get, you know, because of privacy notices, we sort of get a top-level notice, but I don't think it gives us a good snapshot of how big the problem really is, and potentially where it is, and if there are pockets of, you know, greater stress that are indicative of the underlying statistics of not just the actual suicides, but the attempted suicides, the hospitalizations. And so I think that staff needs to think about finding a way to synthesize that information in a way that doesn't violate HIPAA, but that gives us a more, you know, this is my data versus, you know, meaningful data. I think you could help us be better governors and better policymakers, and look with greater stewardship at our resources and professional development if you informed us better with more detail. And where a report like that would fit in, you know, would have to be determined, but I think it's essential.
The one piece I would say is that the Health Department, since we had the EPIA done, has issued an annual report that updates some of the statistics that were available in the EPIAid, and it looks at attempts and a variety of other information geographically as, and that next report should be out in the next month, so we could send the link to the superintendent, and he could send that out just as part of a briefing packet.
Now, you say geography. Does that mean geography of the schools?
Typically not, but it'll be, they give some areas of the county. They're not going to overlap specifically on school boundaries, because that's not how the information is collected. When you go to the hospital, they don't ask you what school. They ask you your address, and so they're getting zip codes.
Well, like I said, I think it's incumbent upon staff to try to synthesize that information to the greatest extent possible, because you could have, we could have areas of the county where the stressors are different, and they're experienced differently by different cultures, different, you know, high school populations, middle school populations. And I think that for us to be able to link, you know, what's happening in homework, what's happening in technology, what's happening in discipline reports, what's happening in, you know, athletics. There are certain schools where there is a much higher preponderance of students having outside employment at the high school level than there are in other schools. And, you know, starting to look and understand with a greater degree of information. Dr. Brabran, I talked with you about some work that I'd done with the county on their services side, in looking at and synthesizing data, instead of making assumptions about what's happening and why, actually using the data to inform. And there are some people on the county side that are doing, like basically, data universities for their staff. And I do think that this could potentially give us a lot of information to say, you know, is this something that is systemic or endemic to, you know, a school culture? Is it a homework-related issue? Are there things happening outside the context of the school day or the school year that, you know, we don't have as much influence on, that we need to talk about directing, you know, stuff to our board supervisors in terms of county resources? I just, you know, the fact that they report it and it's geographic, that's not meaningful.
If I could just share, one of the interesting things, we just had our, I had my courtesy meeting with the county executive, then I met with the county executive and his team, his deputies, and our chiefs. So it was about five of us each. And one of the things that you really shared today that's just intriguing, we talked about, we're going to begin to meet quarterly. Haven't done it in years. We're going to start to meet regularly. We need to see county data through a school lens. That's what we need. And so part of the one Fairfax in this work, it's almost information equity. How do we create equity for some of the county stuff that could really help drive us do our school system better? There may be some things on our end that could actually help them too, but this issue right here is an example of having information from the county with a school lens that could help us be a better school system. So I appreciate it, and we're going to be following it.
And the Netbowl or on the county side is one of the ones that, that's where we start to actually truly collaborate, you know, between our board and governing, the county side, and taking data that, I understand they collect some of it, but they don't collect it in a way that's, the intent of their collection is for whatever purpose they're collecting it. That doesn't help us with $2.8 billion help the mental health and wellness. And by the way, I heard that said, and I was very happy that it was the wellness screening. I forgot to give kudos for that, that, in a way that allows us to do what we need to do better in terms of serving the needs of our constituents. Thanks.
Ms. Schultz, thank you for your question. I do have two reports that we can send you. One would be the 2016 Youth Survey Surveillance Summary from the county, but also the EPIAid report that does have some of that information broken down by region, school region, as well as hospitalizations, so we can share that with you. The youth survey data also comes by pyramid, so that's some of the information that we can share.
Yeah, I don't think that your survey data is the kind of stuff that I'm looking for, because that's, I mean, you know, yeah, we see that. I'm really actually talking about the suicides and attempted suicides, hospitalizations, because that's where there's, that's the nexus between what kids report on a survey, and by the way, a lot of them lie, and what ends up happening. And there's a big chasm between what they talk about in a survey and between events. And if we can, and when I say we, I can't understand it if you guys don't have the information. I'm asking you to be curious, to get that information, to start looking at that, and what Dr. Brabran was just talking about, what the county side is looking at, is starting to look at some of this data through the lens of how we become better informed and direct our resources and our time in this regard to start to become proactive.
Our work has really advanced since we started looking at this as a result of the EPIAid study. And when we use the wellness screenings now, we have our tiered, we put our students in kind of buckets. Those that need some more imminent, they're at more imminent risk. We have good relationships with the Community Services Board and private providers. Those folks go right there. We work with families to connect them to the services they need. The ones that are, we're not, there are some indicators, we need to talk to them further. We take those students for clinical interviews in the Columbia Screener. Based on that screener and the clinical interview, we can make a determination on what level of services, many times identify the stressors that are impacting that sense of risk and that sense of wanting to maybe make a plan and move forward. So that information and that wellness screening, and then the way in which we're doing the wellness screenings makes that an option year-round, not just when the screening takes place. So we have a lot of that information. The use of the Columbia has really standardized the wellness screening beyond the signs of suicide that we were using and still use, but it gives us more data. So we have a lot of good data on students at imminent risk, students not at imminent risk, but students who need a screener and who need an intervention either in school or outside of school, or both.
Okay, I'm going to emphasize again, I appreciate that, but that's at the really micro level, at the student level, and that's important. But what happens is, if you take that information in a broader scope and understand that now you can start to look for trends, and you can look for, and I've talked about this before, when do they happen? Do they happen, you know, abutting holidays? Do they happen over the summer? Do they happen at grading time? Do they happen in certain pockets of the county? And instead of reacting to a student in stress, what we can start to do is be informed and see, are there triggering events? And I don't mean to use that in the, you know, the social media, true triggering events, where we can start to make better informed administrative decisions, decisions in the classroom. Now you're starting to inform data to change the behavior of the system, not to react to an individual student in stress.
And you are absolutely correct, and we are doing that, and I'm sorry I didn't emphasize that. Schools are looking at all that data. They're using their data. They're organizing their wellness activities. You might be able to speak to the work of the Student Advisory Council and how they're taking the youth survey data. They're taking other data. They're working with school leaders to plan wellness activities around the times where they've had their peaks, where those kinds of things happen. We are doing that. I'm sorry I didn't mention that.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got a couple of additional people added to the list, but next we have Ms. Vatakonda, then Ms. Darnak Kovacs, then Ms. Evans, then Ms. Palczek, and then Gobax.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief since I actually have to get back to class. But so you mentioned that, so you mentioned that students are the ones who are mainly bringing forward, like, the risk of their other students. And Michelle mentioned that, like, the stressors that students experience are different at every school based on just kind of like the school culture. So I was curious to see why there isn't really like a provision for peer counseling groups. We have something kind of similar at my school called, like, Minds Matter, and we have students who are certified in youth mental health first aid, and then they're available pretty much all the time over social media to just kind of chat with other students who are in stress. And then if they perceive that it is more of an immediate risk, then they can refer them to one of our counselors or to a suicide hotline or something more immediate. And I think that would be a good idea for the grief counseling groups that you mentioned in the post-vention, because we could have, like, groups of students who are just kind of talking to each other supervised by a counselor, because I know a lot of my peers aren't always comfortable talking to their school counselors or school psychologists, because they worry that they'll be stigmatized in theirs, among their friends and things like that.
That was excellent. Ms. Darnak Kovacs.
Just very quickly, I do want to thank staff and former Governance Committee members for formulating this policy. I think it was important to put into words the more comprehensive approach and positive changes we have made. We had that in a very light policy, but I think this is, it's good, and I really appreciate, you know, those changes and the work you've done to get this out there for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kovacs. Ms. Evans?
Thank you very much for your work on this. This is incredibly important work and a key part of our comprehensive wellness policy. I do have a few questions. So going back to the wellness screenings, who gets them? How, it used to be that we had them just at a couple of schools. It was school-initiated. Do we have this done now on a regular basis at a certain level? How many students get that?
At this point, I think we have 23 high schools who are doing it at at least one grade level. Typically, they pick either ninth or 10th. It sort of fits into the 10th grade health curriculum, so in some schools, they're doing it as part of health curriculum, and other schools, they're doing it, like, all ninth graders at the same time. Those schools who are not using the SOS, the Signs of Suicide Presentation, and then using that screener, are using another screener typically that they have developed. We actually just recently put a question out to all of the schools to try to get their dates, because we have to try to coordinate them in such a way that they don't overwhelm CSB if we, you know, we can't have 16 on the same day, because we would not be able to provide resources to all the kids at the same time. And so we are seeing increased uses at the middle school level in addition to the high school level, and we're having our mental wellness specialists reach out to the schools that did not report that they had plans to do a survey this year, to find out what the reasoning was, and to try to encourage them to utilize some form. What we found is that the presentation of the video, followed by the screener, the kids get really tired of that video really quickly. And so you really can't, like, do it over and over again, because they're done after they see it once. And even the first time, you know, the cell phone used clearly dictates that it's not a modern, in other words, within three years, the video is out of date. The kids are saying, look at what they're wearing, look at their phone that they're using. So we have to sort of, well, the video information is important, and so we look for different ways to get that, but the screener that we use, you know, we try to standardize that so that we have a process for doing that.
Would there be a value, I was just going to ask you about standardization, you know, if we've got 23 to ask all of them to do it and ask them all to do it in a sequence, as you say?
That's what we're sort of working towards at this point. The other critical piece is that we've put into place sort of monitoring in terms of, you know, if you're looking at your kids who are, whose grades have gone down, you're looking at your kids who suddenly are having attendance problems, those kinds of things, to be alert to those as signs that those are kids that we need to be mindful of and reaching out for. So the screening concept goes across more than just one day here. Answer these questions.
Good, good, yeah. And then you referred to something that I was going to ask. One of the answers I got years ago to why we don't do this routinely was, we would be making too many referrals, and there's just not enough services. Where do we stand in the community on beds and services when we refer?
We've, it's improving. We have, two sites have opened more bed facilities. We're also doing more where they don't necessarily have to be hospitalized, but there are other options that can keep the kids safe. One of the current things we're working with our county partners on is that, for positive reasons, our probation homes, our boys probation foundations, which were boys and girls facilities who had been involved in the courts and were placed on probations, are very under-enrolled. And they are, those who are there primarily also have mental health reasons, and that's been, mental health issues, and that's been a pattern that we've seen over the last several years. And so we are now working with our county partners on a use of those facilities as a referral option for kids who need, they're not locked, but need a secure environment where the mental health services can be delivered, et cetera. So we've been working with county partners on using existing resources to expand our options for families and for kids. We got a second mobile crisis unit in for kids, and so that is something that can respond directly at home, and then work with that family for 45 days. They are way over, we could use them way, way more than we have people to do it, but we only have one before, and now we have two. So we've doubled our capacity that way. And I know that Enova is looking into the possibility of opening adolescent psychiatric beds again, but that's a multi-year process of getting approved to do that.
And Fort Belvoir just opened, or last year opened, an adolescent partial hospitalization program, so that served a good portion of the population. And with our Return to Learn policy that Mary Ann mentioned, we have opened dialogue with Dominion Hospital. We've met with them several times. Often, students would be absent from school for mental health issues, and the school would be unaware of that because of the stigma and other concerns by the families. But having the partnership with Dominion has really opened that conversation and helped parents understand the tremendous supports that can be had when partnering with schools, and still be confidential. So that's been a real asset, too.
So I did have a couple of other things, going back to the, what we're seeing in terms of trends. I would, by the way, like to see the youth survey data by pyramid. I think that would be valuable. I do try to look at that every year, but of course, it's not just the number of suicides and attempts, but suicide ideation. That's something that I do look at every year with the youth survey, and in some cases, it's really shocking numbers in terms of the suicide ideation, particularly among some minority students and female students. And do you have a sense, and I should have asked you this question before we came in today, but as far as the trend on suicide ideation, is it up-down, or is it... is it up, down, or, or is it steady?
We're waiting, you should get in the next, pretty soon, few weeks, the new youth survey, the youth survey data from last year. Last, the year before that, it had not come down. It had either for, for suicide ideation and, and students reporting that they had attempted suicide. It had not come down, whereas we had seen downward trends in a number of other areas. One new tool that I will refer you to when the new survey data comes out is that the county has put on their site, not at a pyramid level, but at a county level, that you, anybody can go in and say, well, I'd like to see what is the relationship between kids who are saying, I've considered suicide, and kids who are saying, I've experienced domestic violence. Like you can pick a couple of different things and see immediately what the correlation is as opposed to us pulling each of those things separately. It's an interactive site, this, the new site that will be out.
That's, uh, that's, that's good to know. I'd be very interested in that. Just two more things, uh, won't come as a surprise. I'm going to, when you talk about risk and protective factors, is sleep included in that?
It is. And, and what the data showed us was that getting six or less hours of sleep was related on the youth survey to kids who had said that they had considered or attempted suicide. So fewer hours of sleep. It is an interesting bimodal thing in that people who report getting 10 or more hours of sleep go back up again in terms of... Right, because of the depression aspects of it. So we did see that.
Okay. And then lastly, I...
Correlation, absolutely, correlational.
And so I did just send everyone here, my colleagues and all of you, an, an article that I thought was interesting that was in The Atlantic that relates to a couple of topics we had today about technology and some of the social isolation. And it's just, I think it's something that we need to be cognizant of. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek.
Yes, thank you so much for your work. I will be brief. Appreciate everything you're doing. And as you know, I have, um, very excited to see both the work being done in the schools, but also in the community outreach and with parents. So a, a couple of questions. Number one, um, I, I know I've visited a few of the, the middle schools and their advisory council meetings. And some of them, especially, you know, Kilmer Middle School are doing some pretty innovative things, um, you know, that are developmentally appropriate for that age group to start to kind of share experiences and gather data. They had, I think, little exit cards for every student. And they could share personal concerns or concerns about another student, not a full survey, right? But just very simple. So I'm wondering, A, you know, at the middle school level, before we get to high school, is this sort of across the board? Or are we still working to kind of expand and implement the middle school prevention and outreach? And then the same, you know, community outreach. I know sometimes parents don't actually show up to meetings. So are we looking at other ways to really share the information that's maybe more appropriate to our very busy families these days?
Yes, in terms of, we are seeing a growing number of middle schools doing activities. They, um, they like the stress less laugh more kind of a concept that was put in at the high school level. And so many of the middle schools are bringing that in. And we certainly encourage them to do that. Again, we just put out this survey and I'm sorry, I can't remember the number of middle schools who said that they were doing something, but it was, it was close to half. We can get you the exact number. In terms of outreach to parents, we continue to try both website information, direct kit messaging and those kinds of, of things. We've also been working closely with communications and embedding in tweets and in Facebook postings and in those kinds of things, positive messages in terms of this is a good thing to do with your child. This is a protective factor, you know? Whether it's have dinner with your children, watch their screen time, take the phone away when they go to bed. You know, different pieces of information, just in snippets of information, because that seems to be a good way to start the conversation. And that way, we reach parents of children of all ages. And there is also, um, I don't know how many of you are aware, we created a wellness website for students. So students, most of our information had been targeted to parents or targeted to adults. And this one is specifically targeted to students. And we got a lot of feedback from the Student Advisory Committee on what should be included and how to say it and what not to include, et cetera.
No, and that's great to know. And I guess I'm wondering for the middle school level, is there a plan? I know there's a lot going on at the high school. You have a lot in your plates. But are we starting to think about how to ensure, you know, implementation to the other half, I guess, of middle schools? Especially finding ways, because sometimes we've had students who attempted or committed suicide in high school where we saw signs, right, in middle school or before. So are we, is that something you're looking at? Is that something you need action from us if we were more interested in pursuing that?
We are rolling it out more in the middle schools as we get more standardized and more solid at the high schools. And as Mary Ann said, over half our middle schools are implementing. We're moving to the other half. And we even have some sixth grades at some of the elementary schools doing the education piece now. So we have lost a couple of elementary students to suicide and it's important for everyone to know. So yes, we're, we're moving along.
Okay, wonderful. Any updates would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Just, I'll add one thing. The SAC, the Student Advisory Council, the students are actually developing a wellness page that's sharing all of the great things they're doing at their own particular high schools to address mental health and wellness. It's not ready to roll out yet. They're still gathering information. So we will continue working with the SAC to finalize that website and to share those great ideas. It's fabulous.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. And I'm glad I followed both Ms. Evans and Ms. Palchek because some of the things they've already raised, I was about to raise, especially on the middle school coverage and reaching down into that community to make sure that we address concerns there. I'm also glad that you raised the additional beds at Fort Belvoir Hospital because there is a real issue with secondary PTSD for our military-connected students that have, uh, their parents have had multiple deployments. And so doing something along those lines in that community is particularly important. Wanted to raise a couple of other, and I do, I can't thank you enough for all the work you've done on this. And I support this policy wholeheartedly. I would like to see a bit more Cognito training for our students so that they can also work on that peer support system. I think at this point, it would, you have in here support for Cognito training for teachers, but it proved to be very powerful for those students through the SAC that took the Cognito training and then reached out into their own community and were advocates. So anything you can do in those lines would be important. And then one last area that I wanted to raise, which is not in the documents, um, and that is when we provide supports to our students, especially for our elementary school students, and they may be admitted to a program, if they are benefiting from SAC services, if they're in these programs, their spot in SAC sometimes goes away. And I've heard this with two separate incidences where the student, um, because the SAC programs are so overloaded and there is an importance of getting paid, that parents, especially of those parents that may have, um, be on a tight budget, they're now having to pay co-pays and additional money for their student at a, um, program such as Dominion. So they can't pay for SAC. And then when their, their student is part of their reentry plan, they can't go back to SAC. And so could we somehow, and that's only anecdotal, a couple of parents, but it's heart-wrenching.
Thank you for letting us know about that because in multiple other situations where something similar has become obvious to us, especially when we're working with the Office for Children, we can find a solution pretty easily. So I'll talk to Anne Marie Toohey and see what we can do about that.
Just so you know, I mean, I reached out to the Office for Children when this happened and they resolved it. But it just added another stressor. So if there's a way that we just systematically take care of it as part of their reentry, we should.
Some of the concern may be, they will have to hold the spot open. And in order to hold the spot open, they need to know that they need to hold the spot open. So how much information the parent is sharing with them about why they need to hold the spot open? It may be part of our breakdown, but I can talk to Anne Marie and see if we can find a way to somehow work around that. As we've mentioned more than once, we often have kids who return to school and we don't know that they have been hospitalized because the parents are choosing not to share that information. And so it's difficult sometimes to intervene with everything that could possibly be put out. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Cognito does have a program that is specifically for high school students. And we have integrated it into 10th grade health. And it is, hopefully this year will be used more than last year. Again, some of the, the issues were just around having computer access and those kinds of pieces. But, um, it is something that we have complete support from our Health and PE Department for that to be integrated, for 10th grade health.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to hear that.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgumara.
Well, let me start by saying, first of all, I really appreciate what you're doing in my work. I deal with a lot of children who are impacted by mental illness or their families have been impacted. And so while I've not had an opportunity to thoroughly review the policy, I'd like to just highlight a few things that I'd like to ask you to focus on. And a lot of it has to do with a prevention, which I'm sure you're aware of. But I'm not sure with respect to training. And I, I'm sure you're identifying some of the red flags, some of the things that should tip us off. And I would be curious in having further discussion on how we respond when we see those red flags. I am sure we don't have, that's very problematic with respect to staff. And, you know, I, you know, I understand the problems with that. But I really would like to see, um, you know, how our teachers, how our counselors are able to intervene. And even students, you mentioned five kids, teens in each region are trained.
I, I said five teams. So those are teams of psychologists and social workers who respond when there has been a death. And they've been specifically trained in what the appropriate response is when you're going in after a student death or a teacher death.
Right. Okay, so also identifying for the schools what they can expect. And you may have done all of this. But what they can expect when those sorts of things do occur. I'd like to talk a little bit more about what types of prevention can, can occur when we know children are having stressors in a particular school. I know we had a high school where they were having numerous suicides. What can we do, you know, to bring about natural de-stressors in, in that environment? So those are the types of things that I'd like to focus on. You may have included those already. But I just wanted you to know that for me, those are extremely important.
We're happy to schedule a meeting. We can go over all that with you.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one Go Back, Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I, one of the beauties of having a work session is that while this was worked out in governance, bringing it to the other eight board members, hopefully, we look at a way to refine it. And so I would like to humbly suggest that on the first page of the policy in section three, paragraph one, it says, "Prevention and Education." At the very end of that first paragraph, I'd like to just see a, a basic sentence inserted that says that staff will gather annual county data and reporting on suicides and attempted suicides and provide to the board. That, that's just a way that, again, since it is our policy, I, I can, I can say it again or whatever, but, uh, but, so yeah, section three, first paragraph at the end. I just think it's important that if we're, as a board, saying policy-wise, it's important that part of prevention, obviously, is going to be looking at the data, you know, getting, getting the county's data and gathering, gathering that county dating, data and reporting it back to the board and the superintendent, I think is an important statement. So, uh, I would leave it for Teresa Johnson and her team to flesh out that sentence or whatever. But, um, I, what I was hoping, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Evans, is if we could just show a hand saying that that would be a revision to go to the...
Yeah, so just to, I mean, I just want to make sure everybody is clear. We didn't have it up when you started to describe the change. If we could just go exactly to where you're thinking the change would be and then maybe just re-articulate it one time so that we can all...
Yeah. Yeah, right afterward says, with staff members, yeah. So information on fostering wellness, that sentence shall be shared with families. And then the final sentence would say, uh, annual county data will be gathered and reported on attempted suicides and suicide cases to the board and superintendent. Again, it's, yeah, youth, you can say youth suicide, attempted suicide.
Did you want to include ideation as well?
No, I think the, the point, Ms. Evans, is that...
Well, I guess we have it from the youth research.
Yeah, but I, what, yeah, what I was hoping for is, is we know the public health department gets the reports from our emergency rooms and other areas. And so as Ms. Schultz was pointing out, we can, in one of our hospitals in one year alone, we can have 150 attempted suicides for youth, teen youth. And we should have a, a sense of that. It is high, but it is...
You fellow board members, is that good enough of a description? Do we need to see it in writing?
The, the goal being that if with, with our, you know, can, support for that, staff will craft the sentence and it will show up at the, the vote for our consideration.
Are we ready to have a show of hands on this sort of change?
Can I have one clarification? I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson. I just need one clarification that when we add that sentence, Mary Ann, Dr. Panerelli, sharing with me that we cannot get that by school, but we can get county-wide data.
Yeah, I wasn't saying it by school. I, I really tried to keep it a generic sentence. I just think anything that we can get for the county data on our youth suicide and suicide attempts.
Thank you for clarifying.
Are there any other folks that want to make a comment on this before we get a show of hands? Okay, can we have a show of hands as who would support this insertion? Okay, that's unanimous. I just, I am going to just make a couple of comments. And I, I think the policy with that changes, I think, reflects a, a great effort on the part of staff. There, there are points, though, that I think really aren't policy points, but I just want to make sure that we don't lose track of them. A very wise educator said to me recently that people love their parents, but people love their children twice as much, at least. And, and, and I think that puts into focus for me how important this is, that these are, these are children we're talking about and, and they're precious to everybody that works with them, but especially to their parents. And so we have to, have to really focus on how we can do what, the best possible job at minimizing a loss of life amongst our students due to suicide. So with that in mind, I just want to make sure that we stay focused on how we transmit and share information as children move through the system so that kids that are in elementary school that are identified as showing some signs, that information gets passed on to the, the principal and staff at the middle school and likewise up to the high school. Because I think sometimes there is a breakdown, possibly a loss of information. And in cases, some cases I have heard, and this is anecdotal, but that in fact, a bad event happens and there was information that they didn't know. And, and that's, that's tragic. I also want to just pick up on one thing that Mrs. Schultz brought up, and that is reflecting our efforts to, to adjust to spikes, both in incidences, not just geog- geographically by pyramid or school, but also during the time of year to make sure that we are focusing extra attention during those times of year when, when we know historically that we've had additional incidences. Another point that wasn't raised is, and, and I don't think this is a policy matter, but how do we handle it when a parent is very reluctant or refuses to, to secure mental health psychiatric services for their child? What is our response in that circumstances? Because that, depending on, on, you know, the parents and their cultural backgrounds, they may not be receptive at all towards, or may not be able to afford securing psychological and psychiatric services for their child. And, and then lastly, just, I just wanted to make sure I understood. They said there was an, the interactive site where we could pull out. Can you just repeat that for everybody so we can take a look and...
When the youth survey comes out this year, we'll send you a link. But on the, you could Google FCPS Youth Survey or Fairfax County Youth Survey. And on that site, there will be a interactive tool that you can take any two questions that are on the youth survey and see how they correlate. survey and see how they correlate with each other. So-
That's, that's fantastic. So I don't know, do we need a next step for a discussion of the policy, or are we just going to have another regular briefing on mental health in the schools?
Okay, can you hear me now? People never say they can't hear me. Okay. With respect to parents and how they respond, and I noticed that you said in your surveys, I think you added, not, it may not be the survey, it may be the medical form that people are filling out with respect to whether the child has experienced anxiety. Does that also include a question with respect to whether the child is receiving mental health treatment, medications, or things of that nature?
So on the regular health form that parents fill out, it asks, is your child, does your child have or are they receiving current treatment for any of the following? Are they on medication? Are they on this or are they on that? So we wanted to embed the mental health elements, the same as they are with the rest of the elements. If they indicate that there's, they're on medication or that they were recent, recently, you know, in treatment for, there is a process where then someone calls the parent to get more information, but it's typically not on the form itself, because there's just too much information that would have to be put on there.
And, and the second part of that would be with respect to Mr. Wilson's questions, with respect to a parent that may not be getting treatment, are, is the staff trained? Because I know that there is a legal procedure by which the school can bring that to the attention of the court.
It depends on sort of the degree of risk for the student. So if we had a student who we felt was eminently suicidal and the parent was not agreeing and helping get that child to treatment, then, and immediate treatment, then CPS would be involved. And so, yes, we have a whole process for, for doing that, and it has been invoked from time to time. The other thing that most people are aware of is that we have a partnership with the county to address some of the financial issues. So if we have a student who we feel is not imminent, like they need to be in the hospital, but needs an urgent form of mental health assistance, and the family is within 400 times poverty rate and has some barrier to accessing that treatment, we have private providers in the community who have agreed to hold a slot open so that they can see the student within five days with a referral from the school system, and the County Board of Supervisors is paying for that. So we call it short-term behavioral health. And it's sort of set up like a, like an EAP program, so they get free treatment for up to eight sessions. And then if they need continued beyond that during that time, they're linked to other services.
Okay, thank you. And just a quick question on the youth survey data. Do you send that to us also by district so that we have that, or is it just a link to the-
I need the link of the disaggregated data.
Right, so, so the, once the new one comes out, which will be soon, the countywide data will be on the public site, but we can, we then create an intranet site that has it broken up by pyramid, and we can send you those.
Okay, so that, obviously, it kind of falls into a next step. I mean, do, do we, do we have other next steps that people want to put up to, I don't know if Ms. Mulberg has a list of things that she's captured that we? Okay, yeah, there are a few next steps here, so if we could just take a quick read through them. The first bullet, I think, is picked up in your language, Ms. McLaughlin. Is that correct, the first bullet there?
What I did say was that we have the current information from the Health Department that we could send the link to. We will shortly have the data, and we can send that link for this year, so we can, for the 2016 information.
Since it's going into the policy, and again, we're trying to model for any of their school divisions, the goal was that it would be, say, you know, annual reporting and, or annual gathering of the data, the county's data on teen suicide. Oh, oh, Schultz was the first one. I looked at the wrong bullet. Okay. Yes, thank you.
Are there any other comments on the bullets as written?
Can I ask a question? The, the third bullet, are you saying in the policy, we should include a provision for peer counseling? Because that's something I would like to research a whole lot more before we put it into the policy.
I thought the student shared it as a suggestion.
As a suggestion that that's something that we can, but, okay, thank you. I didn't either, but the way it read there, I just was not sure what we were being asked to do.
Okay, is there any comments on the bullets as written? Okay, hearing none. I'll deem them all approved to go forward. And we're going to adjourn now, if we can, for a short break, maybe 25 minutes.
Yes, we will, yeah, we will come back at 1:25, and I'll remind my colleagues that PEC is scheduled to meet after we're done this afternoon. So if we can make up some time, that'll be kind to our colleagues on PEC. So 1:25, come back.